Good evening. I'd like to bring the May meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Mrs. Caldwell, may we have a roll call placed?
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Kudjuski?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Mrs. Kudjuski, the invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father.
To the flag. Thank you. May we have the reports from student representatives, Marissa Kowalski and Matt Cleaver, please.
At the kindergarten academy, the administrators would like to thank Mrs. Hawkinson, the staff of the John Heinz Environmental Center, and the Interboro High School mentors, providing a wonderful learning experience for the students. The boys and girls continued their study of native plants, birds, and animals at the center. And they'd also like to thank Mr. Mack and all the staff for a fun-filled Jump-A-Thon event. Many parents and family members were able to come and see the action. We appreciate your attendance and volunteerism. Over $7,000 was donated to the American Heart Association. What a great response from all of you. At Glenolden School on April 1st, our school held its annual Career Day, which is run by Peggy Seleski, our guidance counselor. She invited about 10 business people from the area to come and present these careers to our middle school students. It is a very interesting, informative day for our students. They look forward to it each year and have a lot of fun. At Prospect School on April 11th, first through fifth grade participated in Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. Each grade went through a 30-minute circuit that included 11 exercise stations that focused on some type of jumping. The event raised over $2,400, and the money would go to people who are suffering with heart defects. And a visiting clay artist, Rick Hoffman of Covington Clay in Kentucky, demonstrated making vases and bowls on the pottery wheel to all of the students at Prospect Park School during their art class. The students each cut out a clay tile that would be made into a mosaic to be displayed in the school. Mr. Hoffman will be delivering this mosaic in June.
At Norwood School on April 11th, Norwood had an assembly with the Flyers, Bob Kelly, who spoke to the students. The Academy of Natural Sciences visited Norwood's school on April 22nd. In attendance was a raccoon, hawk, and a snake. April 24th, Norwood held its annual faculty versus eighth-grade hockey game. The faculty won three to one. At Tinicum, towards the end of March and through the month of April 3rd, eighth grade flawlessly completed the reading, writing, math, and science PSSAs. Thank you to all of the students and teachers for working as a team during this stressful time. At the high school, the Spring Musical was April 3rd through the 5th. Footloose, over 70 Interboro High School students participated onstage, behind the scenes, or in the pit of the Spring Musical Footloose. They performed for packed houses each night. If you didn't get a chance to see the show live, you can watch the musical numbers on YouTube by searching for Interboro. National Honor Society, the Interboro chapter of the National Honor Society welcomed 79 juniors and seniors into this prestigious organization. Keynote addresses were provided by Erin Shemla, our student president, as well as Mr. Ryan Johnston, our high school principal. Parents and all those in attendance enjoyed a wonderful evening. Special thanks to Superintendent Bernadette Riley, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Valerie Ekman, and Assistant Principal Sean Conti for being in attendance. Special thanks also go out to Mr. Freel and Ms. Bowe for providing the music for the ceremony. Good job, Megan McGee, William Soroka, Kirk McGrady, and Anthony Macarello. I would also like to congratulate the new Student Board Representative, Abby Marola. She won the election on Friday. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Marissa and Matt. And before we move on, Marissa, on behalf of the board, I would like to present you with a plaque. Thank you.
Mrs. Hager? Mrs. Hager, can I speak real briefly?
Marissa has been a faithful student representative. She's been here. We appreciate her dedication to her job, and we thank her very much and wish her well in the future. We will miss you. Thank you.
Can I speak real briefly?
Yes, Matt.
I just want to say that Marissa has been a great mentor for me throughout this past year, and I hope she does great in everything she does in the future.
That's very nice of you. Thank you. Thanks. We are going to move into the public comments section. I just wanted to mention that we had prepared some fact sheets that were on the back table for two of our items. One was the procedure that we are going to follow for the vacancy that has occurred on the school board. We'll go into that a little bit when it comes up on the agenda. And also, there's a more detailed fact sheet on the pending airport settlement. We did agree to a tentative settlement. It is not finalized. No funds have changed hands, so we consider it to be proposed at that time. But it does provide details if you would like to take a copy. Mrs. Kudjuski?
Yes, first up tonight, John Benante.
Greetings, board members. I'm glad finally to be able to introduce myself to you. I'm going to try to keep this as brief as I can. Basically, what I intend to do is I want to ask one question, and then I want to make a couple of statements. The statements should definitely take less than five minutes, okay? The first thing I was wondering about, I've contacted, I've attempted to contact you, oh, and Marissa, I wanted to give props to you too. Great job. District is proud of you, and so am I. Okay, I didn't want to forget that. I've attempted to contact board members over the past couple of months with mixed results. Some of you may know that I had worked at the high school as an employee up until 2012, and I know that during that time, there was a problem, a persistent problem, with emails coming from outside the district getting trapped in people's spam mail. I basically don't know if that's happened with you guys, because sometimes I've gotten responses, sometimes, you know, nobody responds at all. I've read over here where you take questions under advisement, so perhaps you really don't want to answer now, but I would like at some point to know if that's been an issue.
It has been an issue periodically.
Okay. And I also want to make sure that I mention to you guys that I know the people in the tech office, and I think they're doing an excellent job, so this is not a reflection on them. I know that they have been on top of this issue as of a couple of years ago, and if it's still persistent, I'm sure that there are other things going on that are just very difficult for them to take care of. So, that was my one thing, and piggybacking on that would be, when I sent these emails, I never got any, like, feedback that they bounced. And that's of concern to me, because if parents or other community members do have questions for you, comments, they may send them, and they may not even know that you guys have never reached it, because they won't get a bounce back. So, what I'm also hoping, if you want to take this under advisement also, is that you might provide, assuming that this might be an ongoing problem, and it may, that you may be able to provide some alternative means of people to contact you, just in case. So, you know, they can feel confident that if they have something that they want to get to you guys, they'll know that you guys get it. That was my question. My first statement is something of a little concern to me. I've developed a relationship, at least while I worked at the high school, with a number of students. I think your high school staff, and I can only speak about the high school staff, I think the vast majority of them are excellent, and I still feel kind of a bond, even though I've been gone from there for a couple of years. The one thing I did notice when I was there is a very marked reluctance of people there to speak up when there were issues of concern to them. Morale, when I was there, was not good. Communication, when I was there, was not good. People don't necessarily know what's going on. The community, as far as I could see, does not know what's going on. I see the cable channel. It could use some improvement. So, I think that's something that I hope will be dealt with within the district.
Mr. Benante, pardon me.
Yes.
You may schedule a meeting with Mrs. Riley if you have concerns about any of those issues.
Okay.
We don't...
Okay. Noted. No problem. The main thing I wanted to say is that if somehow or another people aren't hearing about issues or problems, it doesn't necessarily mean that there are none. And that's the main point I wanted to make. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Hager personally for getting back to me a few months ago. Believe me, an email that I had sent to you, I know that you guys have families, lives, jobs, you know, you do this. This is kind of a labor of love for you guys, so I do appreciate that. And I wanted to make sure I gave, like, you know, some props. I really appreciated that as well. My last one, I'll try to keep this as short as possible. My main purpose, really, for being here is to express my serious concerns about a new administrative position that's been posted. And all I want to say about that is I want to urge all of you to really do due diligence in any candidates that you will be interviewing. I'm not sure who's going to be doing the interviewing, but please do due diligence, as they say in political circles, vet the people, because I've read the job description. The job description is very ambitious. There are high expectations for this particular position. You cannot afford to not have the most qualified person that you can find with proven experience, motivation, and knowledge. I cannot stress that enough. It is very, very important. I don't usually come to these things. I even dressed up for the occasion, because I usually wear a football jersey, so I'm wearing a baseball one this time. So, that's basically all I can say. It's very, very important, because whoever eventually is appointed to that position has the potential to impact progress in this school district for the next few years. I will be watching, and I know that there will be some other people watching as all of this unfolds as well. I thank you for your time, and I wish you the best.
If I may comment, Mr. Benante, the board has total confidence in Mrs. Riley and the administrative staff. We're well aware of the position. Our intentions are the same as yours. We want to hire the best people so that we can deliver the best services for our students.
Okay. I appreciate that, and that's what I will be hoping to say. Okay. Bye-bye.
Zerdy Dobie?
Zerdy Dobie, Tinicum, number 20. You're going to have a 1.5% proposed final budget increase?
That is our preliminary figure, yes.
And now, have you reached any agreement, or is there any provision in here for the teacher's contract?
We have not settled a contract with the teachers. We budgeted as best that we could for the future, so we're confident that we will be able to meet our obligations.
So, you're saying that there is an increase for the salary proposed in this budget?
No, I'm not saying that.
No?
I'm saying that we're confident that with this budget, that we'll be able to meet our financial obligations for next year.
Okay. So, if they have no contract, there's no increase. That means, the way you prepared for it is by actually having nothing in there?
No, that's not what I said. I said that we have, we're confident for next year that...
Let's put it to you this way.
This budget will...
Is there an increase in the teachers' salary overall in this budget?
There are increases that occur every year with step movement and increases in Peasers, so all of those factors have been taken account into this budget.
All right.
So, the natural increases, we've certainly taken care of those.
Natural increase?
Yes.
How about the ones that you're going to vote on for a salary increase?
Well, as I said, we're confident that this budget will handle that for next year.
Okay. Well, what's, and so if you could address, what's the status of that? Because they're your major employee group, and where are you? And to my representative, Mr. Eckert, I urge you to get this done by June, to have them on board. And the reason is, they need a contract.
We would love for the contract to be settled in June.
Well, I'm telling my representative to...
Yes.
...to make sure that he is doing this, is pushing this as much as possible. And certainly for the reason that has happened over the course of the past two years, which relates to number 18, which is the, looking for a new board director from Glenolden. Now, just, it says that the formally acknowledged receipt of the order. When did you formally acknowledge it, and who did you acknowledge it from? Who was it sent from?
It was, the order was issued in media by Judge Cronin on Friday.
And so, how did you receive? Did he come here? Did he send it?
No, he did not.
Messenger?
He did not. Our solicitors relayed the information to the board.
Okay. This is, again, back to the teachers and the other groups that are still, have no contract. Over the past two years, the reason why we're in such, had such turmoil over the past two years, just a year ago today, this was the headlines in the Daily Times. You know, the Interboro School District made the headline, the front page of the Daily Times...
Unfortunately.
...regarding the issues of, that were sent in motion by the board directors that were elected in 2011. And the fact is that if any people need an apology, it is the parents from those board directors, and I'm going to mention the names, Mr. Razzie, and Mr. Taggart, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Phelps, and Mr. Murphy, for all the commotion and the turmoil that they set this school district to have. Just for the public record, that, you know, the fact is that Mr. Kleikhorn, were it not for the gaffe that he made a year ago today, and the subsequent fact that he was, had to be let go, he would be the superintendent. And when Mr. Razzie said in September that, "Why wouldn't Mrs. Riley be the superintendent?" Well, that was not your intentions, Mr. Razzie, either you or the other board members, to have Mrs. Riley.
Mr. Dobie, may I just interject here, that this board has been working together very hard to move forward the district, to put things behind, because it certainly doesn't do us any good to sue over the things that have happened. There have been unfortunate things that have not reflected well on Interboro, which is really a great district. So, we are trying to move beyond that. We're working together, and I appreciate all of the cooperation that I've received from my fellow board members and from the administration.
Today, the President of the United States got up and said accountability for people who were not taking care, and the veterans of the United States military. That's accountability, Mrs. Hager. Now, you can want to shove this history aside, and maybe you can save 20% in the cost of teachers by getting rid of all the history teachers in the district. But the fact is that these are things that took place over the past years, and they have affected the people who send their children to this school district. So, you know, maybe it's not pleasant to look at this history, but it certainly is beneficial to the people who have the idea that they can make this school district a patronage mill, and that the priority is not the school district's education of the children. So, I just, you know, it's nice that you want to shove it aside, but it's important that the people of the district recognize why we had the front page of the Daily Times, and who is responsible for that. That's why it needs to be remembered. Now, as to the capacity enhancement program fact sheet, first of all, thank you for placing this in the public arena. Tinicum Township had their meeting this past Monday. It would have been nice if they had given the residents of Tinicum Township this portion of what you have given. Number eight, the Express Park in Wally Park. Now, is that revenue, do you have any idea whether that, these parking lots are going to be taken over? That the properties, because the expansion of the airport is considerable, and from what I understand, that these are going to be taken over by the airport. Is that...
Well, once again, this is proposed. What that clause does is that it protects revenues from the parking lot. So, if any of them go offline, then we will be guaranteed that revenue. So, I can't say whether they're going, or they're selling, or whatever, but what this capacity enhancement project does is that it really protects the revenue of the district, which is, of course, something that we're very concerned with.
And is there any provision in this agreement for ongoing, a sound study, once the project, or if it, even in the course of the project? Because once the new runway is constructed, the takeoff and landing will be simultaneous or simultaneous, and that the headings for the aircraft will likely take place over Delaware County in a more direct than they are now?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there any provision in this?
Not to my knowledge in the CEP, although it could be, but as it pertains to Interboro, we don't have any input in that. That is, you know, ours was strictly a real estate revenue in terms of the real estate taxes for the school district. So, all of those other issues is something that we wouldn't be involved in, because we really have no authority there.
Well, one of the issues came up was the school.
Well, of course, yes.
And that was the sound that was proposed, that there was no sound study done, and that school was not included in it. So, maybe you, maybe that needs to be put into the...
Well, when it is signed, then there is a one-time grant of money for Tinicum School. We have some ideas about that, but nothing's been decided, because it's not a done deal yet. So, we're not moving ahead until it's a done deal.
Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Kudjuski, can we move to motion 5.1, please?
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on April 16, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Serini.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Good evening. I'm happy to report that it has generally been another slow month in the legal department here in Interboro, which is always good news for all. We're continuing to provide advice on student issues and to support your administration on a day-to-day basis as needed. They do a good job, pretty much on their own, but we're there to support them. We are also in the process of planning some, what I think is going to be very useful, summer professional development to your regular education teachers to help enhance their understanding of how to provide an appropriate public education to students, and I'm very grateful to the superintendent for that opportunity. It's a very good thing for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kudjuski, could we move on to 7.1, please?
Motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending April 30, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. 7.2, please.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $4,713,188.65 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mrs. Kudjuski?
Motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2013, 2014, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Correspondents, Mrs. Kudjuski?
Yes, Mrs. Hager, we have two items this evening for me to read. The first one, I just want to thank President Hager and the board members who worked to have Mr. Murphy removed from his seat on this board. I would also like to thank the community members who never gave up on their push to make this change happen, especially Donna Franz. It is only through their tireless work and constant pressure that this change finally happened. I hope that the community will see this as an opportunity to change this board for the better. I can only hope that many fine individuals will step up to be considered as a candidate to fill this vacancy. I expect that the board will do all that it can to see that community members who are considered are fully vetted, so that the issues we have seen don't happen again. I also hope that the selection and interview process is open to the public. Glenolden deserves to have another fine representative on the board, as they currently have with Mrs. Ann Kudjuski, who is fully committed to our students and district. Sincerely, Chris Kelly, Essington, PA. And the second item, dear Mrs. Kudjuski, if time permits, will you please read the following during the correspondence section at the school board meeting on Wednesday, May 21, 2014? Thank you in advance. I would like to thank the following groups and simultaneously share some facts about music education. Superintendent Riley and Board of School Directors, thank you for your conscientious and continued support of music programs in our district. Fact, regardless of socioeconomic status or school district, students who participate in high-quality music programs score 22% better on English and 20% better on math standardized exams. District administrators and music teachers, thank you for your thoughtful career choice. I am sure you have a deserved sense of accomplishment and reward, knowing that so many students benefit from your enthusiasm and dedication. Fact, children who study a musical instrument are more likely to excel in all of their studies, work better in teams, have enhanced critical thinking skills, stay in school, and pursue further education. Plato once said that music is a more potent instrument than any other for education. District music students, thank you for your choice to make music a part of your education. I applaud you for sharing your talents and rewarding the Interboro community with your amazing and joyful performances at the district's recent music celebrations. Elementary concerts at Glenolden, Norwood, Prospect Park, and Tinicum Schools, the middle and high school jazz band and choir concert in the park, the high school concert band, singers, concert choir, spring concert, and the solo and small ensemble concert. Fact, music is for life. At 70 or 80 years of age, most people can't play the games they played as a child, but they can sing, and they can play a piano or another instrument. Music is a gift that will last an entire lifetime. Respectfully, Margie Evans.
Thank you, Mrs. Kudjuski. It's a nice tribute to our music program. I'm going to move on to committee reports, and I'll begin with the finance committee. The finance committee met on May 5th, and of course, the number one item on our agenda was the budget. The board agreed to a preliminary increase of 1.5% in our taxes. This is according to a timeline that is established by the state that we must abide by, and the final budget presentation will be, the final budget approval will be in June, and we will have a budget presentation at that particular point. As I stated earlier, we're very confident that this budget will cover our needs. We are still in the process of upgrading at a very large expense Norwood and Tinicum Schools with the HVAC systems. We're looking at investing in our infrastructure for our information technology. So, we're moving ahead with some projects that are long overdue, and we're very, very excited about it. We also reevaluated our... We also reevaluated our fund balance, our commitments to our fund balance and are looking forward to tackling some of these issues. We also reviewed some preliminary financial statements, which we do every month. And I think that's about it. I will then go to Mr. Eckert for GBO.
Thank you. The GBO Committee met immediately after the Finance Committee. It was a very short agenda. On there, there was a presentation by Mr. Dave Cuscola concerning a software program, TeachScape, which will enable and help with future evaluations, which is a mandate from the state, which will be taking place within the next couple of years in the state of Pennsylvania. That was all the agenda items. I just want to tack on that in the previous committee meetings and the board meetings, because there was a question earlier tonight about communications and emails. There is a three-phase project that will be taking place as soon as we pass our final budget with some projects to improve the communication systems in the school. And the last thing is, while I have this here, again, parents, please, the information is up on the website concerning the Keystone exams. I cannot push this enough. This is a big change for any students in the class of 2017. I will continue to throw out reminders out there because it is for your benefit, you, the parents and the students, to stay on top of this. Thank you. We will meet on June 2nd, following the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. And before I move on to Mrs. Floyd, I just wanted to mention that also on the agenda tonight, we are awarding a contract for food services. We certainly heard from the community and the students, the faculty, the administration concerning the food services. So we've moved ahead and we'll have a new company in place. That's later on in the agenda. And Mrs. Floyd, legislative update, please.
Yes, I'll try to keep this short. It's difficult because there's so much to tell. Last Thursday evening, Mrs. Hager and myself went to a regional legislative meeting. And representatives from Montgomery, Bucks, Chester and Delaware County were there and the following legislators were also there. Senator Andy Deniman, Representative Bernard O'Neal, Representative Kate Harper, Representative Matthew Bradford, Representative John Galloway, Representative Scott Petrie, Representative Stephen McCarter, House Education Committee Chairman Paul Clymer. It was a very interesting, informative meeting and we got into a lot of discussion in regards to some hot topics. It was brought to our attention, the main topics were special education funding, the pension reform or relief, charter school reform and funding, as well as basic education funding. It was brought to our attention that the Keystone test is a $300 million unfunded mandate. And fortunately, the Education Committee was able to convince the Department of Education not to add the additional test that they were planning on adding. And for now, it'll only be the three that we presently have. Senator Deniman commented that from past practice, that it wouldn't surprise him if in a few years these tests will probably go to the wayside because students won't pass, therefore won't qualify to graduate, and the problem will have to be addressed. His point wasn't, don't take these tests serious, but more that look at all the testing that is being done and the cost. And in the end, from past experience, it doesn't work because the kids are just being overtested. We had a superintendent from Havreford School District that basically broke down the testing timeframe. Education will take, I'm sorry. Initially, it was 45 days that it impacted instructional time with the PSSA test being implemented. Now, from his calculations, he says approximately 120 days is being taken away from instructional time in order to prepare and do all the testing that is being required by the state and federal government. And what a shame. But yet the state will give us a hard time, all the districts throughout the state a hard time as to snow days and making them up. But yet they don't worry about the instructional time that is being taken away from all these tests. So the legislators are hearing the educators and the various groups that, you know, this needs to be looked into. It's getting out of hand. Some other top stories. PSBA, the education groups around the state are urging passage of special education funding changes to correct system of overpaying charter schools. It was brought out that school districts sent charter schools over $350 million in special education tuition, while charter schools only spent approximately $156 million on special education, providing them with nearly a $200 million profit on special education alone. So this, these are the kind of things that our legislators are finally catching on and realizing. And it was stressed at both the one meeting that we went to Thursday night and then Friday morning, first thing, we were at another legislative meeting with the county and met with Senator Pledgie. And basically, we are being encouraged to contact our legislators. We, as board members, and to encourage you as community members, taxpayers, to contact our representatives and tell them that these things need to be looked into. We need reform. We need funding reform. Charter school, you know, formulas have to be changed. So I could go on and on and on, as I'm sure Mrs. Hager can agree. And I'll just leave it at that. And I'll talk to Mrs. Hager and Mrs. Riley about what we could put on the website so that if anybody wants to look further into what I'm talking about, the details will be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Evans, the Delaware County Community College?
Yes, there was no meeting for the Delaware County Community College Liaison Committee. I don't have a report from there, but I was asked by a member of the community to provide some information regarding the dual enrollment costs and establishment. So I will certainly do that for her and get back to her as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. De Batista, the Delaware County IU?
Yes, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on May 7, 2014. Just some highlights, an approval to create a long-term substitute teacher position to serve waitlists of itinerant education students from May 8 through August 5, 2014. Contracts were made with various school districts for DCIU to provide services during the extended school year from July 1st to August 29th at a cost to the districts. However, Inner Borough is not on that list. Approval to operate Career Hero Summer Camps from June 23 to June 27, 2014 at the Fallcroft and Marple sites for students ages 11 to 14 at a cost per student of $175. These three people were recognized for the DCIU Stars for exceptional service, Trish Wolf, Deborah Miller and Nora Connell. The next Board of Directors meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 4, 2014. The hot topic still remains the expansion project at the Delaware County Technical School. As I've spoke the past couple of meetings, there's been resistance from some community members in Aston that don't want the expansion to occur due to some of the alternative programs from the IU coming to that location. We did host, our last meeting was hosted at the Technical School. We invited community members in. The culinary program put out a spread for the community, kind of show off their stuff a little bit. And apparently tonight, there will be announcement at 7:00 PM, which is already passed, about they're making a comment on the expansion. I don't know what that's going to be, but they're saying things are getting out of control between the community and the IU. So I'm interested to see after the meeting what they have to say about that. But is the interest of the IU to continue with the expansion project and to bring those services all under one roof at the Aston location? So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. De Batista. At this time, if the student representatives would like to attend to their homework. Marissa, thank you so much. We'll miss you. Bye, Matt. Ms. Kuduski, could we move to motion 10, please?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page 2, ending on page 6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments by board members? Mr. Razzie?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. I'm in receipt of a letter that I'd like to read. Our longtime district employee, over 20 years, Ms. Sue Leahan, who was our athletic director, provided me this letter as her district representative. Dear Superintendent Riley and Board of Education, please be advised that as my intention to retire as the Inner Borough School District Athletic Director, I hereby tender my resignation for the purpose of retirement from the employ of the Inner Borough School District effective with the expiration date of July 3, 2014. At retirement, I will have spent 20-plus years at Inner Borough School District as the athletic director. Certainly not all of the time has been trouble-free and there have been times that we're trying, to say the least. However, I can honestly say that the time I spent here in the district has been amicable and productive. Over the years, I have worked with many professionals and dedicated administrators on both a professional and personal basis. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff, faculty, parents, custodial, maintenance and transportation departments for their support that they have shown to the students, athletes and the athletic department. Please convey to the entire Board of Education my gratitude for their support that they have bestowed upon the student, athletes, coaches, parents and myself. Sincerely, Susan J. Leahan.
Thank you, Mr. Razzie. Any other comments? As usual, we thank all of our, we have two retirees. We thank them for their service to our district. It is Susan Leahan and Evelyn Dougherty. So with the motion made and seconded, all those in favor of motion 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 11, please, Ms. Kuduski?
Motion that the following items be approved from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction as listed on page 6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 12, please?
Motion that the following items be approved from the Office of Pupil Services and Special Education as listed on page 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 13, please?
Motion that the following items be approved as listed from the Office of Facilities and Technology.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero.
Motion that the following items be approved as listed from the Office of Finance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to mention that 14.1 is the homestead and farmstead exclusion. That is another motion that we have to pass yearly, according to the state. Also, we have to, every year, do the real estate transfer tax. And this is where the food service will be awarded to Chartwell's pending approval by our solicitor. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Ms. Kuduski?
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the TeachScape customer agreement with TeachScape Inc. for the 2014-2015 school year in the amount of $14,288.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the four-day summer work week beginning the week of June 23, 2014 and continuing through the week of August 11, 2014.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments by board members?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I just want to say that the four-day summer work week, I think the folks in the school district will really appreciate. They work hard all year. They worked hard through a very rough winter and I hope they enjoy their summer.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Motion 17, please?
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve to enter into the attached MOUs as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor? Sorry, I need, we need a roll call. Mrs. Caldwell? Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps? Mrs. Kuduski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero. Motion 19, please.
18.
Motion that the Board of School Directors formally acknowledge receipt of the order of May 16, 2014 and declare the Glen Olden region two-seat vacant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Before I see the floor, I just wanted to let the public know that the board has discussed the process by which we will be filling the vacancy. It is on the fact sheet, the requirements for the residents for any applicant who fits the requirements are listed in the back. So we also will have on the website, on the district website and also Glen Olden's website, those same criteria that we agreed upon. And yes, it will be an open process. Any other questions or comments from board members concerning the vacancy? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I would like to first thank the DA for seeing the necessity of taking this and addressing this issue and seeing it through it. I know a lot of people were frustrated because of the timely, you know, process, but everything was done and done properly and I thank him for that. But I especially want to thank Mrs. France for her persistence and staying on top of this and pursuing it because it was something that needed to be addressed and this district needed it to be addressed. And it's done. And now we need to fill the position and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions, all those?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Just to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. Just wanted to echo Mrs. Floyd's comments. There's a few very active, very vocal folks in the community that participate in government and that's what makes government for the people work. So stay engaged, stay concerned, stay interested and as Mrs. France and her husband have, stay involved and pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. So for motion 18, all those in favor of passing motion 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Motion 19, please?
Motion 19 is for the election of treasurer to serve for the period from July 1, 2014 until June 30, 2015, under Section 404 Pennsylvania School Code.
Once again, this is, we go through this every year to name our treasurer, according to state code. So I'd like to call for nominations for the position of treasurer.
Mrs. Hager, can I second that motion first before you do that?
Yes, you can.
Second.
Second. Let's then move on to nominations. Let's then move on to nominations for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Bill Phelps, please.
Mr. Eckert has put Mr. Phelps' name for the nomination as treasurer. Any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Do we need a second on that? Second? For close?
Second.
Nominations are closed, and I'd like a roll call, so an affirmative vote would vote for Mr. Phelps as treasurer for another year. Ms. Caldwell? Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuduski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager? Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Phelps. And finally, motion 20, Ms. Kuduski?
Motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015, with proposed expenditures of $57,322,132, requiring an increase of .4941 mils over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 1.5% for a new total millage rate of 33.4347 mils.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Question? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. Should this read, "To adopt the attached proposed preliminary general fund budget," rather than final?
I believe proposed expenditures are in there for 20?
It says proposed final, doesn't mean it's final.
It's proposed. So, when, in June, when we vote on it, the proposal will be out of there. So, I think the wording is adequate for this.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I also wanted to note that expenditures for those HVAC programs at Norwood and Tinnicum are also included in the budget because we'll be spending the money. And what that does is that it increases our budget, it looks as if it increases our budget, but actually, our budget is increased by the cost of those programs. So, there's a difference every year, sometimes it's higher or lower, and it's due to these construction projects that we're funding. So, any other questions or comments? We need a roll call vote on motion 20, Ms. Caldwell, please? Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuduski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager? Yes. Motion carries eight, zero. Any old business before the board? New business? We'll go to the comments. Superintendent Riley?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. We've had a lot happening this month here in the Innenboro School District. I'd like to highlight just a few things. Earlier this month, the district hosted the county-wide 2014 Reading Olympics. We had over 1,500 students here from all of the school districts within the county. Three evenings in a row, we received a lot of compliments from the county and the DCIU for hosting this event. It's an opportunity for us to really show our stuff, and we came through. And I would like to thank Dr. Ekman and Mr. Abbottable for helping to coordinate this with the DCIU. I would like to thank Mr. Woolhoff and the Prospect Park Police Department for working with us on the logistics. And I would also like to thank the Key Club Student Council and the Honor Society students who came and were student ambassadors and helped basically manage the kids, get them to the rooms, help the parents. It was, as I said, it was a really wonderful opportunity for us, and we received a lot of positive feedback. So, thank you to our administration for supporting that. I would also like to recognize Sue Lee Han and Evelyn Dougherty for their years of service to the district. They are very dedicated, and they have done, have been very supportive to our students and our program. So, I wish them well in their retirement and all good things to come. Earlier this month, I also attended the 2014 Partners in Learning Celebration sponsored by the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union and DCIU. We had students that received awards. Jacqueline Bors for making the 2013-2014 All Delco Haiku Team. Samantha DiMarco, Colleen Quinn, and Catherine Measure received the John Unang Scholarship. These students were selected through a competitive essay contest and received $1,500 towards educational expenses, so we're very proud of our students who won these awards. Also, at this event, the Delaware County Excellence in Teaching Awards are given out, and this year, Innenboro's recipient was Lori Lonergan, who was a special education teacher at the Glen Olden School. She received $500 and $1,000 for the school. So, lots happening this month with the concerts. I was able to get to some of these events. When you came in this evening, you saw some of the artwork on display. We have very talented students. The art show is officially tomorrow, so if you're able to come in, please stop in and, you know, see all of the artwork of our students. So, thank you very much. And I would like to thank the board for the support towards the administration on the four-day work week. We are looking forward to that, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. And may I also reiterate how wonderful the artwork is in the high school when you walk in. It's quite delightful, I'm looking forward to it. Any other board members have comments?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
I just wanted to mention to the community, I had the opportunity a week or so ago to attend a NOPE conference here at the high school sponsored by the superintendent and the school district. NOPE, if I have the abbreviation correct, is Narcotic Overdose Prevention Education. I'd invite everybody to start really, really paying attention to our children in the district and to what is essentially a heroin epidemic, whether it's in Delaware County or eastern Pennsylvania or wherever, it touches everybody's lives, every socioeconomic, socioeconomic group. So, it really doesn't matter where you come from, just be aware, pay attention, and keep an eye on your kids. I keep an eye on my kids, you know, keep an eye on all our children, and let's, let's help keep them out of trouble. I hope to eventually get established a regular program here at the high school through the superintendent and their, I guess, mental health specialists, where kids will have somebody they can talk to and where they can get educated and aware about what the dangers are of addiction and prescription drug abuse. So, just like I said, pay attention, because it is happening all around us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Evans's comment about that program. I was also in attendance. Yes, keep an eye, like Mr. Evans said, on the kids, on the kids in the community and what have you, but also, keep an eye on your medicine cabinets. That was emphasized, because that's also part of this addiction, is the prescription drugs that the kids are getting their hands on, and they pointed out that they're coming from not just mom and dad, but grandmom and grandpop's medicine cabinets. So, watch your medicine cabinets, lock them up, lock up your drugs. Don't hold on to your prescriptions longer than necessary. If you don't need them anymore, get rid of them. I found it very, very interesting, scary, but very interesting. As Mrs. Riley said, this is the busy time of the year, a lot of things are going on. I've been to a couple of spring concerts. I was to one DARE graduation, I'll be going to a couple more in the upcoming week or two. That's another program that I think is very, very important, it's near and dear to my heart. I've been attending them for as long as I've been on the board, and I'm very supportive of that program as well. Even if only one child, one fifth grader remembers and stays away from drugs and alcohol, we were successful. So, again, contact your local police department, see if there's something you can do monetarily, especially because there is no funding for these programs, and they have to count on the community to be able to fund this. So, therefore, another program that we need to keep going. But we have very, very talented kids out in the hallway, looking at the artwork, you'll see, the talent is unbelievable. I mean, it's hard to believe, looking at some of those pictures, that high school kids did it and not professional artists. And the musicians, Mrs. Evans bringing out about, you know, the musical department, what talent we have. We have to dwell on the positive that goes on in this district and not dwell on the negative. So, with that said, I'm looking forward to the rest of the activities throughout the year, and next month, I'll report on what I saw in the upcoming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Hager?
Yes. Mr. Phelps?
Yes, I would just like to thank you, Mr. Razzie, Mr. Eckert, and Ms. De Batista on your work on the CEP agreement. I know it was long hours, and it was a great outcome for this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kuduski?
Yes, I'd just like to thank everybody for attending the public meetings. Coming out and supporting the school district and our students is very important to all of the board members up here. We like to see your faces, we like to hear your input and your comments. I appreciate it, having to read some letters of correspondence this evening, and we welcome any feedback, as I said, from the community. Just remember, if you ever want to send a letter, just like these nice folks that I read their letters tonight, make sure that you sign it, or we cannot share it. And Mrs. Evans, thank you. As you well know, I'm a big supporter of the music program and always will be.
Comment?
Mr. Eckert?
For the record, motion number 16, the day the building will be closed will be on Fridays. It was not in the motion, and it was not announced, so, just so everyone here knows and out there picking this up on television, the district buildings will be closed on Fridays. The other announcement is, there will be construction projects going on in Norwood and Tinnicum, so please, there'll be further announcements in June as the buildings close as to availability of, will there be access to those buildings or not? So, in the June meeting, I will have more information for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. I believe that schedule will be posted tomorrow on the website for the summer work, the summer work week. Ms.?
Finish up with the comments. On Monday, on Monday, June 2, 2014, a finance committee meeting will be held at 6 o'clock with the GBO meeting immediately following to be convened in the boardroom of the administration building. The next work session of the Innenboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, June 16, 2014, at 6:30. And the next regularly monthly, the next regular monthly meeting of the Innenboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the Innenboro High School on Wednesday, June 18, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good night.